Good evening. I call the January 19 Hampton City School Board Reorganizational Meeting to Order. This is the, as indicated, the reorganizational meeting of the Hampton City School Board. As such, I will preside over the meeting until the election of a chairperson of the Hampton City School Board for the 2022 school year, which will occur momentarily. Ms. Bowers, please call the roll.
Ms. Afonja?
Here.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Yeah.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all school board members are present. At this time, we'll move forward with our opening. We'll have our endification and pledge of allegiance. We're delighted to have with us this evening Kingston Talbot, a current fourth grader at Phillips Elementary, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance as well as our endification. Let's welcome him at this particular time. Please come forward. Thank you.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So today I have a poem that I wanted to read for you guys. It's about my favorite subject science. Science: Thinking Like a Scientist. I want to think like a scientist, observing animals, earth or sky. I want to ask good questions, wondering how and what and why. I want to make smart guesses, hypothesizing what might happen and when. I want to do cool experiments, testing my thinking again and again. I want to write up all my data, recording pictures, chart or words. I want to think through all I've done, draw conclusions about what I've learned. Wondering, asking, testing, concluding. This is what scientists do. If you want to think like a scientist, then you must do them too. Then you must do them too.
Great job. Kingston, you did an outstanding job and no question that you're going to become a scientist and we're proud of you. Let me just ask you to share some, something that's exciting in terms of school and/or during your spare time. What do you find to be exciting?
I really just like finding it exciting just playing with my friends and my family.
Great. Well, you know what? That's a wonderful thing to do. So thank you for sharing with us this evening. And I know that there's, that you probably have some special guests with you. So we're going to give you that opportunity to introduce and ask some special guests to stand. So would you like to do that at this time?
Yes.
Please.
Mama?
What would we do without mama, right?
Maybe?
And some administrators. Great.
Ms. Jones.
So you have some great supporters there and again, you did an outstanding job and we're so proud of you and delighted that you were with us here in Hampton City Schools and to learn a little bit about what you find to be exciting. So thank you for being with us this evening and to your mom, thank you for being present. I want to ask if there are board members who would like to make comments at this time before we move forward.
Nothing other than to say, I'm definitely sure that you're not only going to be a scientist, but one of the top ones we're going to all be reading about very, very soon. Thank you for coming and thank you, parents, for sharing him tonight.
Great. Thank you so much. And I know that you're welcome to stay as long as you desire to do so, but we want to thank you for coming again. Thank you for doing a great job and for being present. So you can be seated at this time. Or you can stay and help me conduct this meeting. I don't have any issues with that either. That's right. Let me ask if we have a motion to adopt the January 19, 2022, School Board Meeting Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I've heard a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Kilgore probably has his.
Mr. Chair, I'd ask that we amend the motion to add an action item 8.08 to address actions briefed by the School Board attorney in closed session.
It's been a second to amend the agenda to include 8.08 with a second.
Yeah, under other actions.
Under other actions.
Correct.
And Dr. Mason has made a second to that. Any other discussion? Okay. If not, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote and that is to certainly amend the agenda for January 19, the 2022 School Board Meeting.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to move forward and have some recognitions. And I know that Ms. Kelly Goral and Ms. Ann Cherry is going to come forward and share with us Chairman Cherry in terms of the reorg, in terms of the recognitions at this time. It's an exciting time for us in Hampton City Schools. It continues to be so. So we'll turn it over to Ms. Goral at this time and then Ms. Cherry will join.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, and thank you, Chairwoman Cherry, Vice Chair Mason, members of our school board and members of our Hampton City Schools family. At this time, Ms. Cherry, would you please proceed to the microphone for tonight's recognition? Well, I'm very excited about tonight's recognition. I know Ms. Cherry is as well. On this evening, we are provided the opportunity to celebrate student athletes as well as some special coaches from Phoebus High School, our Phoebus's 2021-2022 football team. So at this time, I'd ask for Coach Jeremy Blunt, his assistant coaches, Coach Wilson and Parker, as well as his two captains, Tyne Haines and, I'm sorry, Mark Wagner and Tyrone Taylor, to please come forward and join me beside the podium. And before I go on, I would like to let everyone know that the rest of our Phoebus football team and coaching staff is joining us via Zoom so that they are watching this recognition this evening. So I'd like to begin actually with the regional championship game. On Saturday, November 27, Phoebus High School defeated York High School at Darling Stadium with a score of 27 to 3, which had them win the Class III Region A Championship Game. So I think that definitely deserves a round of applause. So not only did they win the regional game, next they played in the state semifinals on December 4, again at Darling Stadium, and they took on Brentsville High School. And not only did they win the state semifinals, but they shut them out with a score of 43 to 0.
Oh, that was a beating.
Then they got to move on to the final game of the year. On Saturday, December the 11th, they traveled to Lynchburg, Virginia, and visited Liberty University where they played Liberty Christian High School for the championship. And again, they took home a win with a score of 22 to 14. So that's even, that's the biggest round of applause, everybody. So before I let these gentlemen join you on stage, I'd actually like to everybody to direct their attention to the screen to view a few highlights from that championship game.
It's coming. No problem. Now, that was exciting because we were talking about interceptions after interceptions. We're talking about good blocks. We're talking about run backs. You guys were awesome. I would like you all to join me on the stage right now, coaches and the captains. I will be presenting you with a certificate tonight, but before I do that, I want to share just a few more things about these fabulous Phoebus Phantoms. As you can see, Phoebus had quite a successful year. They finished the season with a record of 14 and 1. This is Phoebus' eighth state football championship and the first since 2011. Let's have a round of applause just for that. Not only did they win the state championship, which is certainly quite an accomplishment, the Phantoms actually earned individual awards at the state level, and that's major. The following players were named to the first-team football team. Now listen to this. Mark Wagner, Michael McMullin, Kamari Gray, Jalen Mayo, Anthony Reddick, Donald Gatlin Jr., Emerson Hurd, and Jordan Bass. All of those were from Phoebus and were named to the first-team state. That's amazing. Usually you'll have a couple and maybe another sneak in there, but we were killing it, right? All right, all right. Additionally, Kamari Gray was named the Offensive Player of the Year. Donald Gatlin Jr. was named the Defensive Player of the Year. And our state championship coach, Jeremy Blunt, was, earned the State Coach of the Year Award. Therefore, on behalf of our Vice Chair, Dr. Mason, the Hampton School Board, our Superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, and all who call themselves people of Hampton City Schools who love champions, we just want to say, we appreciate what you've done. We're glad that you brought such power and presence to this school division and that you brought a state championship as well. We want to honor you with two banners, but I'm going to unfold one and also a statement of achievement from Hampton City Schools for a job well done and for capturing the Class III State Championship. I can tell you, nobody was more proud, and I've got to give her a shout out, than our Athletic Director, Beth Mayer. She was your biggest cheerleader and she was making sure that Phoebus was represented well and in turn, you all represented us well. Because some of the words that we heard about the Phoebus High School football team were not just outstanding, were not just they are fast, was not that they are, they're good at one offensive play or defensive play. What we heard was you all had class. And that word resounded throughout the Virginia High School League. And I want to thank you just for that and your leadership. Now, before I give you a certificate, Coach Blunt, you want to say a few words?
First of all, thank you all for acknowledging us tonight, Dr. Smith and the entire central office and school board members, as well as Dr. Haines and, you know, Ms. Mayer. We truly appreciate all the support that we, that we had this season. We felt it. It was obvious and we were happy that we were able to go out and represent Hampton City Schools so well. So thank you for giving us the support and, you know, hopefully next year, we can do it again.
And thank you for bringing it home. Now, we're going to open one of these banners. I'm going to ask school board members to come up and join us in this picture. But before we do that, if there are any family members of the team, if there are any people from an administration for Phoebus, all people who are here to support them tonight, please stand and be recognized. Thank you. Now, I'm going to get this banner.
Yeah, two will finish with one. Okay, Coach Rod?
Yes, ma'am.
I have to ask you, you're the coach. I have to do laps. Do you want to hold anything? Just so you guys could see it, Phoebus Phantom 2021, Class III State Champions. Let's give another round of applause.
And board members and superintendent, please come up for the photo. We're going to join you, honey.
I say, hold that trophy up so we can see the trophies too.
Now, as they're coming up, I'm going to read the certificate, which says, Certificate of Achievement from the Hampton City School Board. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Phoebus High School for winning the Virginia High School League Class III State Football Championship. 2021-2022, presented January 19, 2022, signed by Dr. Jeffrey Smith, Superintendent and Ann Stevens Cherry, Chairman. Congratulations again.
Dr. Woodhouse, Ms. Afonja, make sure we can see you. There you go, behind those tall football players. Ready? Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations again. And as they're being seated, I just want to add one personal note. I have known Coach Blunt to be a leader who exemplifies not only excellence, but respect. You know, they say respect has to be earned. It is certainly earned when it comes to Coach Blunt, even throughout the Virginia High School League. People honor him because he's true to his word, he knows how to treat students, and he is well-respected among your peers. I just want to say thank you for leading that example.
And here's your certificate.
Ms. Goral and Madame Chair, thank you so very much for that recognition. Again, let's give the, our young people another hand as we recognize the Phoebus Phantom. So thank you. It's always exciting.
It is.
We'll now move into the organizational meeting of the Hampton City School Board. The Hampton School Board shall elect one of its members as chairman. Is there a motion for the chairmanship of the Hampton City School Board for the 2022 school year? Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Smith. I would like to nominate as Chair, Dr. Richard Mason.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a second? Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to just point out a couple of things. Approximately six months ago, when this board determined that they wanted me to once again serve as Chair, that was done for the season, which is ending today. Because I said I would serve until January, and January is here. But during that time, I have to be honest, this board, in conjunction with the superintendent administration, we've done some wonderful things and we have gelled so well. And it is time now, I feel, to pass that baton because Dr. Mason served as the Vice Chair. And in every meeting we had with the superintendent, he was there. In every encounter we had that, you know, we had challenges this year, he was part of it. And I feel completely confident that he will make for a wonderful chair as we move forward because I think it's time for some new blood. And it probably, with all the challenges we have, Dr. Mason be shared. But I can tell you, I hope this board joins me in this nomination. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations and Mr. Chairman, Dr. Mason. We're going to do all.
All the COVID pieces. Make sure that your little fingers are protected. Okay, thank you, Dr. Smith. And with that, we're going to pass. You can come over here.
I will turn my mic off.
You ready to get me out of here, Ms. Banks Gray? She said grab that nameplate. Okay.
Congratulations, sir.
Get situated here. Thank you all very much. First, certainly want to thank my fellow board members for being comfortable with my confidence and confident in my ability to lead this division in conjunction with our superintendent and the division leadership team. I take this task not lightly at all as we plan to move our division forward in a healthy manner, making sure that we're keeping everyone safe. That's the most important thing, while at the same time continuing the academic excellence that Hampton City Schools is known for. I especially want to give a thanks to Ms. Cherry as a former Chair. She has done an outstanding job. I've learned quite a bit from her. So I definitely want to thank you for your leadership. Likewise, I would also like to thank Mr. Jason Samuels and Mr. Joe Kilgore. As their role in the past as Chairs, they've provided me with some great insight since coming onto this board that I definitely plan to continue to utilize them as a support system moving this board forward. All right? So moving along with the agenda, item 3.02, the board shall elect one of its members as Vice Chair. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Samuels.
I make a motion to nominate Ann Cherry for the Vice Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Woodhouse. The motion has been made by Mr. Samuels and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse to nominate and elect Ms. Ann Stevens Cherry as Vice Chair. Any discussion?
May I share something, Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Chairman Mason, I have to get used to that. I made the motion so this board can continue to maintain some continuity, maintain that experience that Ms. Cherry has, not just as a Chair and now as a Vice Chair, but in her position as a, the PR for Hampton City School for a number of years. And also for the internal and external knowledge that we will continue to need as Dr. Mason serve as the new Chair. I think it is necessary for Ms. Cherry to be in that position, to continue to provide some support and some guidance for Dr. Mason as we continue to work with Dr. Smith and to complete, to maintain the school. So thank you, Ms. Cherry, for your willingness to continue to serve this board and also now as a Vice Chair. I appreciate it. I truly, truly appreciate it.
Well, I'm kind of waiting on the vote. Mr. Samuels, I appreciate, I appreciate those remarks, seriously.
Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Cherry.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you.
Once again.
And thank you seriously, Mr. Samuels, for that because, you know, you, I served as your Vice Chair. And we went through some times, but we handled them because we were such a great team. So the respect I have for you is imminent and I appreciate those words. Thank you.
And I'd like to say it's definitely been a pleasure working with Ms. Cherry as the Chair. She's providing lots of insight, lots of corporate knowledge of Hampton City Schools, but great leadership. You know, the experience that she has brought to the table, I've been able to glean some great things from her. So thank you very much and I look forward to working with you in this reverse role.
Thank you. Tag team.
Yes. So moving forward, item 3.03, the board on the recommendation of the superintendent shall appoint Carolyn Bowers as Clerk of the School Board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the board on the recommendation of the superintendent shall appoint Carolyn Bowers as Clerk of the School Board. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. I'm sorry, Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you and congratulations, Ms. Bowers, and we really appreciate all of your hard work in keeping us together.
Absolutely.
Item 3.04, the school board on recommendation of the superintendent shall appoint Sally Sennzer as a Deputy Clerk of the School Board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Samuels? Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
That was a delay. Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 3.05, the school board shall fix a time, date, and place for holding regular meetings for ensuring this, for the ensuing school year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 3.06, the school board on recommendation of the superintendent shall appoint Dr. John Cagiano as the superintendent's designee to attend meetings of the school board and represent the superintendent in his absence.
So moved?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded? Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Lafanja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries.
Before we go on that, could I just say something?
Yes.
During discussion? I just want to thank Dr. Cagiano. He is always there when Dr. Smith is working on other projects. I have never once text him, or he did not text me back within 60 seconds, seriously. So I really want to say how much I appreciate how you, you stand right in there and keep the ball rolling when Dr. Smith is doing a myriad of other things. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. And Chairman, Dr. Mason, I would like to also acknowledge that Dr. Cagiano has been one of the cornerstone figure in, in the leadership as the, as a member of the executive team. And he is tremendously respected by the board for his leadership and his knowledge. So, congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Samuels.
Yes. Item 3.07, the school board on recommendation of the superintendent shall appoint Kelly Gorle as Freedom of Information Officer. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Then properly moved and seconded? Discussion?
She's the best. She really is. Okay, that's my-
Second that.
And I agree. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Lafanja?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations and thank you, Ms. Gorle. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. 4.01 is the personnel report. 4.02, minutes of the school board meeting of December 1st. 4.03, school board consent to receipt of donations for January of 2022. Is there a motion to take that as a block?
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda as a block. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Lafanja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. And at this time, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Smith for the superintendent and staff reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and it's my pleasure at this time to ask Ms. Ruth to take the lead in terms of presenting this evening. As you're aware, that we certainly have tried to work in a collective way to identify ways to support the well-being of our staff. And as you're aware, Mr. Chairman, and certainly vice chair, that you've had an opportunity to weigh in, and certainly members of the board, and to really think about how we might proceed as a school division and really focusing and to continue focusing on the well-being of our, of our staff. And so, Ms. Ruth, who serves as our executive director for human resources, will present information this evening. And I think we certainly, we're communicating to staff members for those individuals who may not be present via tuning in to the televised meeting, will get this information as well if they have not already received it. So, Ms. Ruth.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Smith. Congratulations Chair Mason and Vice Chair Cherry. And good evening to the rest of you. At our last meeting in December, Ms. Cherry mentioned that we are working on several items designed to support both the physical and mental well-being of our staff members. And I'm here this evening to provide the school board with a brief, oh, my goodness, that's the end of the- There you go. Just, do you have any questions?
Yes, it was very good. That was very good.
Actually, the board members are familiar with it, so they've had a chance to review, so just for the viewing audience. But board members have certainly, as a part of the pack, had reviewed this.
I'm not sure what button I pushed to do that. I hope I can do it again, so sorry. At any rate, I want to share with you a few items that we are going to be- I wonder if it's just, it's just changing on its own. If you all don't mind, I'm just gonna stand in front-
Dr. Cagiano is gonna operate. He's gonna serve as the driver.
It, it always takes teamwork. Thank you, Dr. Cagiano. So, let's get started with the first thing I had wanted to share with you, and that's calendar adjustments. January 27th and 28th are already scheduled to be teacher workdays. Originally, well, the 27th is, was always scheduled to be an unencumbered workday. And the slight change to that is teachers now, may now work remotely if they choose to. They can still come into the building if they prefer to work in the school building, but they do have the option to work remotely. January 28th, there is a slight change. It was originally scheduled to be a full professional development day, but we wanted to provide teachers with a little bit more unencumbered work time. So we are going to do half a day of professional development because there is important information that we need to share with teachers. But a half a day will be for professional development and half a day will be for unencumbered work time. And again, both of those may be done remotely or in the building. That will be the teacher's choice. The next change that we've got is week care leave. And back in November, we introduced week care leave when we provided students and staff with additional time off during the week of Thanksgiving. And we had talked then about the fact we would come back and review it and look at potentially adding more days of week care leave. So we are going to be doing that. We are adding one day for the third marking period and one day in the fourth marking period. The first day is Friday, March 4th, and it's already an early dismissal day. When we were selecting the days, we did want to be mindful of the impact this leave would have on parents. So both of the days that we've selected were already early dismissal days for our students. And now schools and offices will be closed for the entire day for all students and staff. The second day, which is in the fourth marking period, is Friday, May 27th. That is the Friday before Memorial Day. So it gives a bit of an extension to the holiday weekend. Again, it was already scheduled to be an early dismissal day, or early close day, I'm sorry, for all staff and students, and so now we will be closed for the entire day. All right, next. You, in, in addition to providing employees and students with some additional time to try and, and re-energize and refocus, we also have been focusing on adult self-care from both a physical and a mental health perspective. And so, I want to share with you. We have been providing our employees with self-care, mental health, physical well-being, activities and programs since long before March of 2020. And we have increased our efforts significantly to, to provide additional supports, since the pandemic began. Just, I'm gonna name a few of those resources that we have been able to add since March of 2020. We have put in a diabetes management program, which has been a big success. And a lot of these programs are in conjunction with our Health and Wellness Center. They've been a huge support to us over the, well, always, but particularly over the last 22 months. So that's been a, a big success. Also, and this one has probably been the biggest success that we've had, and that's our virtual gardening workshops. They've been a lot of fun. You get this big kit of whatever the garden is that you're developing, and you get to, on Zoom, they teach you about how to, you know, grow all the vegetables and herbs you need to make your own homemade salsa. It's, it's a lot of fun. We've had a winning it losing challenge. We continue to do health coaching. Another exciting one has been the virtual healthy cooking classes that we're doing online. So those have been a ton of fun. There are many others. At the bottom of this slide, you'll see that there are two links, one that says self-care resources and one that says activities and programs. I forgot that when you convert this to a PDF, the links no longer work. But as Dr. Smith mentioned, I am sending out an everyone email after this presentation, so it'll go to all employees, and the links will be active in that presentation or in that email that is sent out, and, and you all will get a copy of that email. So you'd be able to look at, link, click on the links if you want more information about the programs that we've got in place. One of the new things that we have added since March of 2020 is we now have a sign up EAP counselor who actually conducts counseling sessions out of the Health and Wellness Center. Well, actually technically, they're all online through Zoom, but she, she is housed at the Health and Wellness Center. Same rules apply in terms of confidentiality. We don't know when employees go. It just makes it a lot closer to home and easier to get an appointment by having a counselor located at the Health and Wellness Center. And folks can just dial that, that phone number that's on the slide and schedule an appointment. So we're super excited about being able to offer that. And then, this is a new partnership that we are going to be entering into effective February 1st of this year. We will be partnering with CareSalus to quickly connect staff as well as, and this to me is the exciting part. It's not just for staff, it's also for students and all their families so that we can quickly connect them to quality mental health and substance abuse treatment program or providers. The service is available 24/7, 365 days a year. That includes when we're on summer break, winter break, holidays, weekends, doesn't matter. They're available to provide assistance. And we will have additional information that is coming out soon for, for all of our employees. So we are very excited about that. And now, if you have any questions. Thank you, Dr. Cagiano.
Any questions from board members? Ms. Lafanja?
Good question. I'm just really super excited to hear about these wellness activities for our staff. I just think that is, is, is critical right now. It's very critical. And so I'm really excited about it. How often is the garden workshop and the cooking classes? Is that like monthly, weekly?
So, we've probably had, I don't know, they're probably more like quarterly. I think the cooking classes have been monthly. There's an everyone email that goes out. I do know, we probably, we offered four or five during that, that, that first summer in 2020. And we've probably been doing about one a quarter, I think, and they, they fill up very quickly. But yeah, there's an everyone email that goes out. You, sometimes they go, they go into my spam. So I have been too late to sign up for more than one of them. But yeah.
I would love to sign up for it myself. I guess I'll have to be quicker to the draw next time. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Ms. Banks Gray?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Chairman, I actually would like to, I don't have a question, but just a, a comment. Thank you, Ms. Ruth. Amazing presentation as, as always. I just want to thank you and the entire Hampton City School Division, Dr. Smith, for taking such proactive steps in staff well-being. It really does pay to invest time and resources into staff well-being and being mindful of mental health concerns. So I just applaud you all for taking those proactive steps. So thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that those week care days are going to be huge for our staff. And, and, and I love it because that impacts not just our teachers, but our cafeteria staff, our bus drivers, everybody. And I just think that, that is gonna be so huge of a statement coming from this division that says we care, because we're not just saying it, we're showing you that we do in, in, in different ways. So thank you, Dr. Smith, for that leadership piece. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Samuels?
Chairman Mason, thank you. I, I just want to echo what Ms. Cherry said about the importance of having these days off. And so, you know, staff member can practice self-care. And how, what, it was very strategic in the days that were provided to the staff, such as the day before, that Friday before the Memorial Day weekend and so forth. And so I know a lot of thought was put in place to support the needs of our families and teachers. As we all know that these are unprecedented time. And our families and teachers have many, many challenges that they face on a daily basis. Their, their stress level is through the roof. And then they can utilize these four days just to relax, decompress, and take care themselves and have some mental wellness. So, Dr. and Dr. Smith, Ms. Robin Ruth, I know you all put some great thought into this, and I think it's, it's gonna pay dividends-
It is.
-for the school division. So once again, just thank you so much for that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Ruth. And again, to say to the board, thank you for your leadership as well. And we appreciate your guidance and your continued support as we move in this direction. And certainly, as I said, the leadership that you provide as a board to make certain that we continue to focus our energies and our, our efforts in this, in this area. So, and thank you, say to Ms. Cherry, Vice Chair, and to our Chair as we met for our one-on-one discussions. Thank you for your leadership and suggestions, and with the full board as well. So thank you. And your guidance in that regard. We'll move now to the budget forecast for the 2022, 2023 school year. It's difficult to believe that we're talking about budget forecast, but I know that we have Ms. Branch, and she's more than capable of talking about the budget forecast and to guide us through the discussion this evening. So, Ms. Branch.
So, good evening and congratulations Chair Mason and Vice Chair Cherry. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. So, I am here to celebrate, as a former pop singer said, Andy Williams, it's the most wonderful time of the year. And for me, this budget season. So I just wanna, Dr. Smith, school board members, and the Hampton community, tonight I will be presenting a budget forecast for the fiscal year 2020, 2023 budget. So, in tonight's presentation, I will go over Hampton City Schools' fund structure. We'll also look at the budget development process. And then we'll continue to look at the school board's priorities for next school year. Also, what our revenue sources are, the local composite index, average daily membership. Then we'll go into Governor Northam's budget proposal. And then we'll talk about expenditure pressures and also next steps in key dates. So just to kind of give a baseline foundation of the Hampton City Schools' budget. So our budget is comprised of seven different distinct funds. And I'm actually gonna start at the top with the School Operating Fund, or Fund 50, which comprises our main operations. So I like to think of this as this is where teacher salaries are, instructional assistants, and the classroom instructional supplies, and everything that's needed to run the school division. Going clockwise, Fund 51, Food and Nutrition Services. This is where we have all of our cafeteria operations across the school division. Next, we have the Fund 60, reimbursable projects. This is where we house all of our grants that are awarded to the school division. So for example, Title I, Title II, and more recently, our federal pandemic relief dollars. Rental Income Fund, or Fund 65. This is the fund that we utilize to house all of the activity related to our long-term rental agreements for space and property within the school division. Then we have our Athletics Fund, Fund 94. So all of the athletic programs in our school across the division, the revenues and expenditures are accounted for within this fund. Next to last, Student Activity Fund, or Fund 93. So this was a more recent change to our budget to now include all of the activity related to student-sponsored activities at the school level. And then lastly, we have our HCS, Instructional Resource Toolkit, or Fund 95. And this is where we house the act- And this is where we house the activity for our new business where we are having customers purchase and also training them on our curriculum that we use here in Hampton City Schools. So each one of these funds goes through a five-part budget development process. And that process starts in the August-September timeframe with planning. And then we move into October and November where departments are providing their budget requests for next school year. Our Division Leadership Team or DLT does a review of those requests in the December timeframe. And then where we are currently, it's part of our data collection phase, which is our main phase, the budget committee meetings have started, and they will continue through February when we get ready to propose the actual budget to the school board in March. And then we have city council approval that has to happen in May. And then by the end of June, June 30th, we are uploading the new budget for the next school year. So at the same time, when we're asking each department, you know, tell us what your needs are for next school year, we also survey the school board to find out what are the priorities for next school year. So what you see on this slide, these are the most common responses from the survey response. So based on maximizing every child's learning, the school board identified the Academies of Hampton, student achievement, early reading, reducing class sizes, teacher and instructional assistance, and advanced diploma programs as priorities for next school year. Then when we look at attract, develop, and retain exceptional staff, the school board identified competitive compensation for teachers and support staff, also recruitment and retention, and COVID-19 stipends for teachers as priorities. And then within our last category on this slide, create safe and nurturing schools, school board identified facilities and capital improvements, and then continuing to ensure the safety of all of our facilities. So all of these priorities are funded through the various revenue sources that we have within the school division. And I'm actually going to mainly talk about our state revenue. As you can see on this slide, 43% of the revenue that we receive across all of our funds comes from state revenue. We also talk about state sales tax because they typically go hand-in-hand. And so state sales tax is about 8% of all of our revenue. Now you'll notice that local revenue is 26%. And I just wanted to provide greater context to that percentage. So 26% is when we look at all of the seven funds that I went over earlier in the presentation. But if we were to look at our main operating fund, Fund 50, the local contribution comprises 33% of that main fund. So I just wanted to provide additional context for that. So one of the two main drivers for state revenue is the local composite index. And this is a measure of a locality's ability to fund the standards of quality or SOQ. The main factors that go into this calculation are the true value of real property, adjusted gross income, and also taxable retail sales. And you'll see that the number here, 0.2741, or 27.41%, that is the local composite index for the city of Hampton for fiscal year 2023. The second main driver is average daily membership, and this is one you often hear about. So average daily membership, this is a look at what was the total aggregate daily membership, and then that's divided by the number of days in session between the first day of school to the last day in March. And when we look at our projection for next year, we are projecting a average daily membership of $18,008.70. Now for comparison, our current year budgeted ADM is $18,008.13. So you'll see that that is a slight increase of 57. Now to the meat of the presentation. So one of the major events in the data collection phase is the release of the governor's budget. And because that release happens in December of each year, what we have here is Governor Northam's amendment to the Direct Aid for Education. So I wanted to really just look at some of the key recommendations that were made. One thing to note, this is the start of a new biennium or new two-year state budget. So there are also policy changes within what was proposed as well. So as we look at Governor Northam's proposed budget, one of the things that happens each biennium is a re-benchmarking process. And I simply like to think of this as it's just a recalculation of what does it cost to fund education in the Commonwealth of Virginia? Now as part of that, this year, what's included in the budget is a hold harmless for school divisions. So some of the data that's utilized, for example, pupil transportation costs, we know that those costs were impacted by the pandemic. They were lower because we were operating virtually for most of last school year. So what was proposed in the governor's budget is to hold school divisions harmless because those expenditures are lower than what they typically would be in a normal school year. So that is included in the state budget proposal. Then we also have, of course, the new local composite index that we went over, and then it's also updated for enrollment trends. The budget also includes revisions to state sales tax and lottery estimates. And the big headline that we've all seen in the news, this budget does include a 5% compensation increase for all instructional and support positions that are part of the standards of quality. And as another note, another 5% is proposed in 2024. There's also additional funding for the Early Reading Intervention Program. There's quite a bit of additional funding that was added to the state program. And that is because it's proposed to extend that program from kindergarten to third grade to then fund resources for kindergarten through fifth grade. Also included is school construction grants, and it's important to note that that is one-time funding. Some additional items within the budget include the removal of no-loss funding. So you remember in this budget development process last year, I talked about there was a hold harmless, if you will, for the pandemic's impact on enrollment declines. That has been taken out of the state budget in this proposal. There is, however, a one-time hold harmless for the elimination of the grocery tax. So school divisions will not feel the effects of that in the 2023 budget in this budget proposal from the Governor Northam. We also have additional funding for staffing for our English as a Second Language Program, additional funding for early childhood programs or Virginia Preschool Initiative, additional at-risk funding. And I always like to bring context to how at-risk funding is utilized. So some of those items are related to dropout prevention remediation, teacher recruitment just as some examples. And then the last main key point from Governor Northam's budget is that it maintains the Virginia retirement system rates at 16.62%. Now back in October, the VRS Board actually recommended a lower rate of 14.76%. But the state budget that we currently have available to us is based on maintaining that higher rate. So learning all of that information, the natural question is, well, what does that really mean for Hampton City Schools? So looking at this proposal from the Governor Northam, this would be an increase of $25 million to Hampton City Schools. But it's important to note that of that increase, $12.3 million is one-time funding. So as we are working through the budget, we have to make sure that we do not utilize those dollars for reoccurring types expenses. So we have to be very strategic in how we propose the budget to the school board and the community at large. And there's another note on this slide, for that 5% compensation increase, we would receive state aid in an amount of $4.7 million to support that. So knowing initially what the state budget could look like, it allows us to then look at, all right, what are those expenditure pressures? Or as Dr. Smith and I have been talking, what are those priorities within the budget? And one of those is always healthcare. We know that healthcare changes from year to year. So that is something that we are working through currently now as part of the budget process. Always compensation for teachers and support staff, which aligns with one of the priorities from the school board. And just for some context for the public, for every 1% raise that the school board gives, that's about $1.58 million. We also have to take into account changes in minimum wage. We know that that could be an impact in this budget that we're developing and then also in future budgets as well. And then also rising costs in non-payroll. So we know that inflation is up and it's costing us more to procure the same goods that we procured last year. So we have to take that into account as well. Now this is not the complete list. We are steadily working in this process to identify all of the priorities and the pressures that we need to make sure that we take care of in this budget proposal. So as we look at what are our next steps and then what are our key dates? So we're going to continue not only to think through and quantify what those pressures and priorities are, but we also look at where can we find savings? Because that's a very important part of the budget process as well. And then we also look at how do we align what departments have requested, what our priorities are, to what the school board has told us needs to be at the top of the list for next school year? And as always, everything goes back to our strategic plan. We will also hold our two-by-two meetings with the school board in February, and then also the buddy meetings, which have definitely been a part of the great work and partnership that we have with our city council. And then just some key dates for the community to know. So on March 2nd, this will be the date that we will propose the fiscal year 2023 budget, and that will be for all of the seven funds of the school division. Then on March 9th and March 16th, we will hold two public hearings on the budget. And then March 23rd is the scheduled date for the school board's vote on the proposed 2023 budget. So that concludes tonight's forecast presentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Ms. Branch. Any questions from board members? Very thorough job, as usual.
Great job. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And while we have Ms. Branch at the podium there, we'll ask her if she would provide the board with a financial report for this meeting as well.
Yes. So good evening again. So tonight, I'm also presenting the November 2021 Monthly Operating Report. At the end of November, our revenues totaled $76.7 million. And this was an increase of about 16% when compared to the previous fiscal year. And that increase is being driven by the timing of when we receive our local contribution from the city of Hampton, which is always based on monthly cash flow needs. And then also we are seeing increased state revenue this year in comparison to last year. For example, the state compensation supplement for fiscal year 2022. Then looking at our cumulative expenditures and encumbrances, they totaled $107.3 million. And this was about a 17% increase when compared to the previous fiscal year. And that is due to an increase in operational and technology expenditures that are associated with expenditures that will roll forward from 2021's budget to 2022. And those are legally obligated funds that those expenditures relate to. And then also, for all of the compensation changes that we had between fiscal year 2021 and 2022, those directly impact when we're looking at what has changed from last year. Then for our ADM, I've already mentioned that that is $18,008.13. But as part of that re-forecast in Governor Northam's budget, they are forecasting our March ADM to be $18,757. So that is a decrease of about 56. And when I ran the estimate, that would be an estimated loss in state revenue of about $240,000. Now that number will change because that is not the final March ADM. So as that information is provided, I will report back to the school board on what our final March ADM is and the impact to our budget. And as always, included in the report are transfers to and from the technology classification for November 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, board members? All right.
That's the chair. Members of the board, that concludes superintendent and staff reports. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving along in the agenda, item six, hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. So far, yes, Ms. Bowles, I have four, that's it. So Ms. Bowles, would you read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Comments shall relate to agenda items or matters germane to the business or duties of the school board. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and are defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Our first speaker tonight is Ken Elazier.
I guess it's on. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
My name is Ken Elazier. I am represented as a community resident and also represented as Kenneth Elazier, doctor, as a professional of the community in my concern as a professional. I'd like to read what I have to say, it'll be brief, in the interest of accuracy. So I've come to request a special forum to address the implications of the executive order, number one, issued four days ago by the governor, and its effect on the HSC community. And of particular concerns are these particular, are these following directives. Number one, to review and revise or rescind the superintendent's memo 050-19, to remove references to any inherently divisive concepts. I believe this is in reference to CRT. Number two, to review the Equity VA Program and to end any portion that promotes inherently divisive concepts. Again, I believe this is related to CRT and possibly to socio-emotional learning. Number three, to end the Virginia Math Pathways Initiative. Number four, to raise standards in K-12 education and immediately take steps to increase the transparency and honesty of performance measures for public elementary and secondary schools in the Commonwealth, and to ensure that such measures do not obscure or conceal disparities in performance among student groups. Those are the four areas that I think are particular concern, that I think could be addressed in a public forum, because the protocol here does not allow for response. or input, especially from maybe people who have a particular expertise in an area. This assumes that the Hampton City Schools are engaged in such practices, and these are serious indictments, and I think they should be addressed in an open forum. The directive given by the governor is that the superintendent of Public Instruction shall provide a report to the governor and the Secretary of Education within 30 days. Any policies, programs, training, or curriculum that falls within the definition of inherently divisive concepts and within 90 days to identify any necessary executive and legislative actions that are needed to end the use of all inherently divisive concepts in public education. Now, I know in the past you have hosted public forums, and I know because of COVID restrictions and the, you know, the challenges of the last year or so, it's been almost impossible to get people together as a group. So may I just, may I suggest, excuse me, that the board conduct a special forum where the HSC community can voice concerns, discuss, and offer inputs, since the public meeting protocol does not allow for this elaboration, discussion, or resolution of any concerns. The benefit to hosting such a forum will ensure that HSC practice is transparent and in alignment with the vision, mission, and values of the community. And as such, I thank you, the board, for your consideration. And I think it's very important that all sides of the issue be heard and that we can address them so that our community will be in alignment with the wishes of the board, superintendent, and with the goals of the State Board of Education. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Alana Branham. Alana Branham? She withdrew, okay. Ms. Branham withdrew. Next, we have Paul Holt. Mr. Holt?
I believe he left.
Paul Holt. All right. And last, we have, it looks like it's David Weddington, Jr.
All right. My name is David Weddington, David Don Weddington, Jr. to be exact. I lived in Hampton for over 19 years now. I got here, came here from the United States Air Force. They brought me here and retired in 2011. I served on multiple levels of the Air Force staff, from the IG team to the headquarters staff here at ACC and even at the Pentagon for a while. My concern this evening is primarily just education in general. I mean, we believe that education is important in our family. We have educators from the daycare area all the way up to the prominent Hampton University, where we have a department chair more recently. So it's really important to us, even to volunteer in that aspect, where we go out and participate in Burgick Elementary Watchdog Program to bring more males into the school system to help out. So it's important to us. And I believe after reading something out of the parent's square concerning Benjamin Sims' seventh grade class going back to virtual learning, that brought some serious concern. Because we all know the challenges of virtual learning last year that we experienced, and having a seventh grader as a granddaughter, I sat side by side with her last year and watched as they struggled through this virtual learning process. I would tell you that not only her as being a seventh grader, but also one with an IEP, it was a real difficult issue to watch and try and help her get through. To identify the seventh grade class and say this decision has been made without any type of communication with the parents, and if so, we didn't get any, I think that's a mistake. I do believe that the children with IEPs and any other type of learning disability, they have their own challenges already. And to put them in front of a screen for an entire school day, I think that's unfair. I think it's unreasonable and it's not conducive to a learning environment that we believe is beneficial. So my concern is number one, why are we making this decision without some type of feedback from the parents? And number two, I don't think it's a great path to go down. I don't think the science supports that. I don't see that in the CDC recommendations. I look across the states, I don't see it, and even across the nations. The UK just recently eliminated all their COVID restrictions. So here we are, going through this process, and the science don't support it, and we're saying the decision is made. So I think that's a mistake. I think that something needs to be reconsidered, and I think you guys, as the board, are the ones that need to make that determination. So we're concerned, and that's basically why I'm here today. Thank you for your time, and congratulations on your new positions.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is deliberation. Item number 7.01, revision of school board policies ABB/GBB, staff involvement in decision-making. 7.02, revision of school board policies ABB-R/GBB-R, staff involvement in decision-making regulations. 7.03, revision of school board policies BDDH/KD, public comment and board meetings. 7.04, review of school board policy CA, administration goals. 7.05, revision of school board policy CC, administrative organization plan. 7.06, revision of school board policy DB, annual budget. 7.07, revision of school board policy DC, funding, fund balance policy. 7.08, review of school board policy DG, custody and disbursement of school funds. 7.09, revision of school board policy DGC, school activity funds. 7.10, review of school board policy DI, financial accounting and reporting. 7.11, revision of school board policy DIA, reporting per pupil cost. 7.12, revision of school board policy DJB, petty cash, petty cash accounts. 7.13, review of school board policy DN, disposal of surplus school property. 7.14, revision of school board policy JL, fundraising. And 7.15, review of school board policy KGA, sales on school property. It looks like we'll go to Ms. Reeves for the first five. Ms. Reeves?
Are there any questions?
No questions from board members? Okay. It looks like the next... Well, all of the rest of the policies belongs to Ms. Branch.
Yes, are there any questions?
Any questions from Ms. Branch? All right. Thank you very much. Those items will be moved to action for the next meeting. Which brings us to our items for action. 8.01, VSBA Code of Conduct for School Board Members. And tonight, board members actually signed the Code of Conduct as presented to us by the VSBA. 8.02, revision of school board policy GDAB, employment status definitions. 8.03, review of school board policy GDB, support staff probationary period. 8.04, revision of school board policy GDBB, secondary job assignment guidelines. 8.05, review of school board policy GDG, progressive discipline. 8.06, review of school board policy GE, athletic and co-curricular volunteers. 8.07, review of school board policy GEB/JOH, acceptance of electronic signatures and records. And Mr. Kilgore will be bringing forth item 8.08. Before we get to item 8.08, I would ask if the board wants to take 8.01 to 8.07 as a block?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that we accept and approve items 8.01 through 8.07 as a block. Any discussion? Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse? Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Lafanja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Now I'll turn the mic over to Mr. Kilgore.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move that the school board proceed with the action briefed by the school board attorney in closed session, as well as to acknowledge that the board continues to ratify the 2021/2022 Instruction and Health Mitigation Plan, including updates available on the Hampton Schools website.
Second. It's been properly stated in second. Any discussion? Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Ms. Lafanja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion passed. Moving on to deliberation. Item 9.01, and this is deliberation first read, I'm sorry. 9.01, review of school board policy EBAA, reporting of hazards. 9.02, revision of school board policy EBCB, emergency closings. Item 9.03, review of school board policy E BCE, restriction of toxic materials in schools. Item 9.04, revision of school board policies EEACC/JFCC, student conduct and safety rules on school buses. Item 9.05, review of school board policy EFC, vending machines, sale of food items. 9.06, revision of school board policy FB, facilities planning. 9.07, review of school board policy FE, playground equipment. 9.08, review of school board policy FEA, educational facility specification. 9.09, review of school board policy FECBA, energy conservation. 9.10, revision of school board policy FECB, accommodations for the disabled. 9.11, review of school board policy FEG, construction planning. 9.12, review of school board policy FEGA, supervision of construction. 9.13, revision of school, review of school board policy FFA, naming new facilities or renaming existing facilities. 9.14, review of school board policy FG, retirement of facilities.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. And I'll try to keep this under three hours, and we'll get through this very quickly. Okay, our first policy tonight is EBAA, reporting of hazards. This is a five-year review with no recommended changes. Policy EBCD, emergency closings. This is a five-year review. Language was added to be consistent with VSBA policy, which helps to define work expectations for 12-month employees during times of emergency school closings. Policy E BCE, restriction of toxic materials in schools. This is a five-year review with no recommended changes. Policy EEACC, also JFCC, student conduct and safety on school buses. This is a five-year review. Language was added to be consistent with VSBA policy, which more clearly defines the possible consequences for inappropriate school bus riding behavior. EFC, vending machines, sale of food items. This is a five-year review, no recommended changes. Policy FB, facility planning. This is a five-year review with a minor wording change, or really a title change, from Deputy Superintendent for Operations to Chief Operations Officer. Policy FE, playground equipment. This is a five-year review, no recommended changes. Policy FEA, educational facility specifications. This is a five-year review, no recommended changes. FECBA, energy conservation. This is a five-year review, no recommended changes. Policy FECB, accommodations for the disabled. This is a five-year review, again, with no recommended changes. FEG, construction planning, five-year review, no recommended changes. Policy FEGA, supervision of construction. Again, a five-year review, no recommended changes. Policy FFA, naming new facilities or renaming existing facilities. This is a five-year review with no recommended changes. And last but not least, policy FG, retirement of facilities. This is a five-year review with no recommended changes.
Okay. Board members, are there any questions for clarification purposes? Thank you, Dr. Bowles.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number 10 on the agenda, information. Item 10.01, just a notice that Hampton School policies are available to the public online at the schools, at the school division's website, hampton.k12.v a.us. Item 10.02, next meeting, our next regular meeting will be February the 2nd, right here at Jones Magnet School. And our next work session will be February the 16th at the Rupert Sargent Building at 1 Franklin Street. Are there any other items for information, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just once again, congratulations to the Phoebus Phantoms. We're always proud of their great work, not only on the field in terms of football, but also in the classroom, on the academic side. And so, again, congratulations to them. And just a quick note that I know that individuals, parents, family members, who are certainly viewing this evening, I think we sent a notification out regarding an early close on tomorrow. And so, family members, and I know that students probably had a chance to retrieve that before family members did. So pretty lengthy communications there, and we provided families with our status at this particular point. And in addition to that, I want to take this opportunity to really express to the Hampton City School Board my appreciation for the condolences expressed in the time of the passing of my father, who I certainly had the honor of eulogizing on Friday. We had a busy, busy week last week, all the way through Thursday, and we closed the week for me, certainly on Thursday evening and leaving the office, and then traveled home to spend some time with family. But I want to certainly thank the Hampton City School Board for your expressions of kindness and condolences to the family and certainly to me. And thank you for this wonderful fruit basket that I'll get a chance to enjoy, and certainly members of the division leadership team and Hampton City Schools in general. So thank you so very much. It is a very caring family, and I appreciate and certainly cherish the time with me in terms of spending time with this board and also with the Hampton City School family. So thank you so very much.
You're welcome. Any other information from board members? Ms. Cherry?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have two quick pieces. One is that I had shared with our fellow board, well, our former board member, Ms. Phyllis Henry, about us honoring the Phoebus High School football team tonight. And of course, you all know, if you know Ms. Henry, you know she knows all things Phoebus. And she had shared with me this nugget of information that was just amazing. And that's, remember we talked about the championship years of Phoebus High School football, and I think they hadn't won one since 2011? Well, Coach Jeremy Blunt was actually a team player on the first championship team for Phoebus. So I just thought that was a real cool nugget to share. And the second thing I've been trying to pull up on my phone half the evening, and I just want to read just something very short, I'm not going to read it in its entirety, but it speaks to the respect that our teachers in Hampton City Schools are given. It speaks to the commitment of our teachers across the division. And that's in a time where they've had turmoil to deal with and all kinds of pieces that were not of their own making. and all kinds of pieces that were not of their own making. But one of our teachers shared with me a letter that she received from a parent. And while it's an awesome letter, I think it speaks for all of our teachers. And I just wanted to share just some clips of it. I won't say who it came from because I did not get permission from the parent to name them. But this letter was shared, and it's to Michelle Johnson, who is a teacher at Moton Early Childhood Center. And it says, "Ms. Johnson, I hope you don't mind me writing you this note. My wife constantly tells me about her admiration for you and the joy you bring to your classroom. She further extows how you have gone above and beyond the call for your students. As a fellow educator, I have taught at every level, from elementary through graduate school. So, I know how challenging it is to guide children to the administration's goals set forth for you. And I know firsthand how difficult it can be to achieve objectives with children with disabilities. However, just as my child, I'm sure you bring with, they bring with them issues requiring special kinds of love and attention. So, I salute you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you for your service. Thank you for being so caring for our children. And thank you for putting your health on the line during this pandemic." And I think that's the kind of letter probably that could go to each and every one of our parents. Don't you agree, Dr. Smith?
Absolutely.
Yes. So, I did want to share that because I think, first of all, for that to be said, but secondly, for a parent to take time to send that to a teacher, speaks volumes. So, thank you.
Yes. Definitely a big thank you to all of our teachers. And that speaks volumes to Ms. Johnson and the work that she's doing over at Moton Early Childhood Center. I did have the opportunity to visit right before Christmas, right before the students went home on winter break, and saw all of the things that they were doing over there at Moton Early Childhood Center. And they're doing an awesome job with our students.
Administration, the principal is just fantastic. You, I want to say, Dr. College Allen, Dr. Smith, you guys did a great job in making sure that, Dr. Haynes, Dr. Barrow, where is she? Okay. Because I know she likes Krispy Kreme. Dr. Barrow, thank you. And I can tell you, when I did go over there, the principal talked about you. And she talked about how pleased she was that you had the faith to put in her and that she is going to do everything she can to make sure that school succeeds. So, thank you.
Yes. Other information from other board members? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.